Okay, thank you everyone for attending tonight's Bryan City Council meeting of Monday, and this is February the first. Gorgeous day for February. Take every one of these we can get. Alrighty, first on the agenda is approval of minutes from our January 19th meeting. Council members, you've been presented with those meetings. Do you have any additions, corrections that need to be made to those minutes?
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Kerry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Next on the agenda is hearing of public concern. Again, this is for anyone that would like to address council. Then it's not on the agenda, and I see no one, so we continue. Number three is an ordinance, and that's providing for transfer funds. So Lori, would you mind numbering and reading please?
Ordinance number five, 2016. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the city of Bryan for the month ending February 29, 2016. This is a transfer from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 general fund for general spending purposes of $400,000. It's a transfer from the 1/2% income tax fund to the 506 wastewater treatment fund of $84,681.80, and this is for payment on the wastewater sewer, sanitary sewer overflow elimination project. That'll bring the balance down to about half a million dollars on that loan.
I move we suspend.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay, number four, we have a second reading on the ordinance, and I think Mayor, did you want to make a comment or show on that?
I'll make a few comments here.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ordinance number three, 2016. An ordinance to amend section 929.03 for residential, commercial, and industrial sewer charges within the city, and to amend 929.05 for residential, commercial, and industrial sewer charges outside the city by adding a sewer charge to all accounts for bills rendered on or after March 20, 2016, for the implementation of planned improvements and maintenance.
As council was aware and discussed at the last meeting, a recent study by the Arcadis group gave the city what it needed to make improvements at the wastewater site. Arcadis was the former Finkbiner Pettus, and they have done studies for our plant for a long time, and try to keep us up to date with EPA and the improvements that need to be made. And after considerable work with Arcadis, they came to the past council and then to this, this council, and gave a presentation, and stated that we had to make improvements to meet EPA qualifications by 1/1 of 17, or mandates, and we also needed to do all the projects at one time because it would be much more expensive to try to do them by piecemeal. So they stated that there were three digesters that had to be rebuilt. They tore those apart last year, and it actually took over a year because of the weather and to spread the waste over the land properly and to get the final results of that, but they determined that the three digesters have to be repaired. The grit removal system needs to be updated due to the equalization pond that we discussed tonight. The grit removes grit before it gets to the plant and causes damage inside the plant. The equalization pond created a big pond out there of water, but the water goes through the pipes now that much quicker, and it pulls the grit out of the pipes and into that pond. So our grit system has to be updated. And then there was some major discussion of the chlorine and the effluent disinfection that cleans the E. coli out of the wastewater before it goes into the ditches. And it was determined that ultraviolet is a lot cheaper than chlorine, a lot safer for the workers, and it would be better if we would go with ultraviolet. So we're looking to do that. It's less dangerous for the workers, as we said. They estimated the cost of all these projects to be around $2.5 to $2.6, $2.7 million. And if you heard tonight, we still owe $500,000 on the equalization pond that we're taking out of the 1/2%. The 1/2% is a fund that's renewed every nine and a half years, and it's for street and it's for sewer, and it was to build the new police and fire station. But with that, and with the labor force being down and unemployment being down and so forth, it's caused a problem, and our 1/2% is not going as far as it used to be. So it has been determined the only thing we can do to stay on pace with EPA is to raise the rates. And then they decided, the council decided to raise the rates by, what was it, $7.50 to raise that amount of money based on pipe size for that. We have notified some of the businesses. I've had no comment. I don't know if council has any comment on this, but I've had no comment back after the first reading.
I have not heard a word from anyone. I have you one way or the other, I guess.
No, the ones I've talked to understand that even when we increase to this, we're still at the bottom half of the state as far as sewer rates go. They've been very agreeable to it, and I just wanted to, that's why I asked not to suspend the rules last week. I wanted to give people a few weeks to come to find us if they had an issue.
So I think we should pass it.
With that, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Kerry?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move that we approve.
I second.
Rick?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
This will be reflected in the bills after March 20th is the effective date of that. Have a little time.
Next on the agenda, we have an ordinance. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number six, 2016. An ordinance authorizing amendments to the contract for the city of Bryan and Williams County combined general health district, and authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the amended contract.
Jim, we'll ask you to come forward. We have been working with Jim a lot just before Christmas and up until now, and he brought forth the old contract we had with the board of health, and there were some things that would need to be outdated that we weren't doing anymore. So Jim, if you could kind of explain what we're doing and bringing it up here.
Sure. The contract dates back to 1987. I think the last amendment to it was 2002. In 1987, Bryan City Board of Health and the Williams County Board of Health came together and created a combined health district at that time. So what's transpired and why we're bringing this forth now is that this last summer, the state legislature changed a law regarding licensing councils. Previously, there was, there'd been in 2002, the last time that it had been amended, there had been the creation of what were called licensing councils, and it's the entities that receive licenses from the health district, like food services, restaurants, things of that nature. This past summer, they changed that and allowed that you didn't actually have to have one. It was permissive, and they allowed the board of health to make that decision. Here in Williams County, we have never really had a strong licensing council. It's created just another layer as far as that goes because we do have board members that hold licenses for restaurants and things of that nature already. That was not the case in some parts of the state. So with that, the present contract has this licensing council in there and creates a seat on the combined board. So what, working with the mayor and Rhonda, what we're looking at there is the elimination of that in the contract, and also just a few cleanup areas also from the standpoint of that there is a, the village of Alverton was listed in there. They no longer exist as a political subdivision. The village of Holiday City was created and puts that entity into the contract because the board composition is based off of population. Bryan City appoints two to the board of health, and then the remainder come from various villages and townships. So it's generally just a cleanup of the language and the elimination of the licensing council.
Also, I think it was in there that we still do birth certificates here.
Yes.
And we haven't done that since John.
For several years, yeah. Yeah. So it's a lot of just cleaning up what actually exists, with the exception of the licensing council, and that would be eliminated.
Move that we suspend?
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is an establishing pay rate scale for seasonal workers. Mr. Don, oh, I'm sorry. Lori, read and number, please.
Ordinance number seven, 2016. An ordinance establishing the pay rate scale for seasonal workers in the Parks and Recreation Department of the city of Bryan, making it effective February 1, 2016, and rescinding ordinance number two, 2015.
Good evening. This is our annual ordinance that establishes the pay ranges and rates for our seasonal and summer employees in the Parks and Recreation Department.
How many, how many seasonal employees do we, I mean, you got basically, this is the parks area, I mean, right? What, six, seven?
Are you talking about pools included, without the pools?
No, 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 that's.
Without the pools?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably seven. Well, we're 10. We have four mowers, and then we have four, five of the summer maintenance workers. So we're pushing 10 in that area.
Yeah, do the garbage, do the fields.
Yep, garbage, fields, trash.
Yeah, whatever.
Mowing.
That's what this includes. This is.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, well, this just, it sets everything from pool employees to seasonal employees to park maintenance employees.
For some reason, I thought we'd done that separately, the lifeguards and pool and all that.
No. I do them all together, yeah. But I mean, maybe what you're thinking is last year, we had some issues with the pool, so we came back, and there was quite a few discussions about pool, whether it be ours or which ones we're going to open and things like that.
Okay.
And that may be what you're thinking about. Last year, we had a couple extra discussions when it came to the pool.
Yeah, you were short on lifeguard.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. How do these breaks compare to the past?
They are exactly the same to the ordinance that we just threw out, except for my summer, the very top one, I raised 5 cents. And then I have a couple on the back page where the lifeguards, we gave them a little bit of a bump because what we, what we haven't been able to do, but what we would like to do is create a little bit of separation between the lifeguards and the non-certified people at the pool and the subs at the pool. Because what happens, or what we're finding is happening is, is if you're a sub, you can make pretty much the same amount of money as a lifeguard, and you get to pick and choose when you work. When you're a lifeguard, you don't make, I mean, you make a little bit more, but not a lot more, and you're on a schedule, and if you can't work that day, then you have the responsibility of getting rid of those days. So we're finding kids that want to work, but they want to be subs so they can dictate when they work and when they don't work. So we're trying to create a little bit of separation between the two as far as salary goes to make it worth their while to be a full-time lifeguard as opposed to being a sub.
Do you think 15 cents an hour will do that?
I don't think 15 cents an hour will do that, but unfortunately, up to this point, we've been handcuffed by the minimum wage laws, and we've been raising them so much that we haven't been able to try to create a little bit of gap between them. And this is the first year in.
Three or four.
Three or four years that we haven't been mandated by the minimum wage laws to make those changes. Is it enough? No, it's probably not enough. But at the same point, we have to live within our budget, and to try to keep the pool as fiscally responsible as we can, we got to stay within some guidelines.
I do like that comment, stay within the budget.
Yes.
That's a good comment.
Do any of these seasonal employees get more than 40, or more than 30?
No.
Okay.
No. Let me clarify that. There may be an occasional week here and there where they work more than 30 hours a week. It is not a consistent more than 30 hours a week. We try to set them at about 28. Every once in a while, like I'll use my mowers, for example, I have three of them that work together. If one of them's gone, a third of the grass doesn't get mowed, that's not the way we do it. The other two jump in, they mow that third while that guy's gone. So they may work a few extra hours that week, but then when that guy comes back, everybody jumps back into the 28. And we're at the point now where with the equipment we have and the reliability of the equipment, there's very few weeks that it takes them 28 to get everything done. I mean, they're pushing, they're right around 25. My summer kids work right around 30 a week, depending on what our weekend schedule is for ballgames. If I have games all day Saturday and all day Sunday, they work more hours because there's more trash and there's more diamonds, and there's more things to get ready on a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning.
Okay, any further questions from council?
I move we suspend.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I move to pass.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the hiring of a seasonal part-time employee, and Ben, you're going to handle that issue.
Yes, sir. Along with the ordinance that we just passed, this would be my first seasonal employee that I would like to hire. His name's Bryson North. Bryson's been with us for about five years now. He's a graduate of Finley. He works as a physical trainer for the Fairview School District, has worked for us in the summer months, would like to continue to work for us in the summer months. I would like to bring him on now to use around the park, whether it be doing the trash route, different odds and ends, things we have going on that we could use an extra set of hands to work with. To start with, it would be less than 20 hours. Once we get into the full swing of things come May, June, those hours would be adjusted to whatever the rest of the crew is working. But up until that point, it would be less than 20 hours a week.
With the warm weather, this will speed it up a little bit, too.
Yeah, this is about a month, month earlier than what we bring people to you, but our thought process is, is it's probably not going to get much colder. So things may happen a lot quicker than what we're normally used to, and having an extra set of hands would be very helpful.
And he will go all through summer and.
Yeah, the plan is for.
Like part of the fall.
Yeah, what happens is, is he, he has another job through, with his degree. He has a master's degree, so he kind of works for us in the mornings and then goes to his other job in the afternoon. So it's kind of, you know, it helps us out. He worked for us through the end of November this year, doing trash, picking up sticks, trimming bushes, I mean, just odds and ends stuff that sometimes gets overlooked through the course of a summer.
And how many years has he been with us?
This is year five, I believe. Don't quote me on that, Kerry, but he's been with us for quite a while.
All right, well, I'm going to skip back to the number seven on the ordinance. Wouldn't that put him higher than what you're?
No, because typically, when they're in college, they are a seasonal employee, or the park maintenance employee. Now that he has graduated from college, he moves into the seasonal year one and two. So he gets paid 8.20 an hour.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anything else from council?
Just Kerry, kind of for your guys' information, the seasonal for us is the adults.
Okay.
The mowers. The guys we give maybe a little bit more responsibility to, whether it be with equipment or what they're using. That first category is strictly for our summer ball-diamond kids. Park maintenance would be high school, college kids. Once they leave college or graduate from college, and if they stay with us, which sometimes we have some that will stick around for a year or so afterwards, then we move them into that seasonal employee.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Yep.
I make a motion, we approve this.
I'll second it.
Kerry?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a resolution, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number three, 2016. A resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as Fountain Grove Drive Rehabilitation.
Mr. Williams.
Good evening.
Sir.
Fountain Grove Drive Rehabilitation. We've been talking about this project for a while. We've been meeting with the school on and off, trying to make sure that we can get something done on that street to satisfy the needs of the traffic that's going to be down there. And in an effort to, as Ben said, stay within the budget, we've tried to apply for a lot of different grant funds throughout time. We tried to apply for some ODOT funds, and that, we did not qualify for that, so then I applied for Ohio Public Works. I did not think we would qualify that, but we actually did. I received a letter on that two weeks ago that said we have been approved for a grant in the amount of $250,000 for the Fountain Grove Drive Rehabilitation. Now, that is a 50-50 matching grant, so if we spend $400,000, we only get $200,000 back. If we spend $600,000, we only get up to $250,000 back. We usually get these for sewers and water lines, like Toy Street Water Line, we applied for one. Usually, we receive high points for water and sewer. We usually don't receive high enough points for roadways. But they changed their criteria this year, and it's all a points ranking, and basically, if we do the four Rs, it's like rehabilitation, restoration, there's four different Rs that go with that. And because we're doing all four of these processes by completely rebuilding the road, we got 20 points on there where normally we would only get two. So we were actually the highest ranked project in our six-county, five or six-county area there. So I'm pleased to announce that, that we will receive up to $250,000 towards this project. And with that, there's always time constraints as well. The grant will not actually be released until July 1st. Now, we are allowed to bid the project before that, which my intention is to bid this in March or April. Now, we're not allowed to award the project. Our device code says we have to award within 30 days unless we state in the contract something otherwise. We need to bid it in April because the bidders need to know that they have between, let's just say, I think you have a council meeting July 5th and July 18th. If we don't get everything back by July 5th, we need to award it July 18th, get the contract documents done that week so they can start the following Monday. They've only got four weeks to get this project done. Now, it's not impossible. It's three days worth, three or four days worth of what we call the reclamation process, which is where they till up the street, add cement to it, stabilize it, and let it cure, and then a couple days of paving and a little bit of fine grading. So really, it's a two-week project, but you know, we'll give them a four-week completion date in there. So as long as they know in April, they can schedule it in their timeframe, and we should be able to proceed with it as well.
And that'd be part of the contract, is the limitations of how long they have to get it completed.
Absolutely. Yeah, every, every project we do, there is a start date, the earliest they can start, and then a completion date, or a number of calendar days that they actually have to complete this project. It's just this project window, we're scaling it down to about four weeks because we know the school, they want to move in late in August. They haven't really set a new school start date yet. I know they're still working on that, but we met with them Thursday morning with their engineers and coordinating their project because they're doing a road widening as well along with this. So they need to have parts of theirs done before we come through with the reclamation process, and then whoever our low bidder is for the paving, which I'm sure will be Gherken Paving, they're the ones that pave around here anyways, they will pave ours, and then the school will also contract them to pave their widening as well. So it'll look like one project when it's all said and done. So it's been a lot of coordination between both entities to get their plans and our plans to coincide, and Andy and I have been working pretty hard to try and get that done. So our goal is to, you know, probably be out on the streets in March sometime to actually advertise for bids for this and receive them sometime in April. So with that, I am asking for permission to advertise for bids for that project.
I mean, would it, you made a statement that you thought we had a meeting maybe July 1st and July 18th, or whatever that case may be.
Yeah, correct, correct.
But would it be an advantage if we would hold a special meeting or something like that?
If it comes down to it.
Down to that, so that we could span that deadline?
Yeah, exactly. If it comes down to it that we need a special meeting, I would ask for that, and I'm sure you wouldn't have a problem doing it. But the way this usually works, it's right around July 1st, Ohio Public Works sends out a grant agreement. And basically, that grant agreement gets executed. I think Lori signs it, the mayor signs it, and then we have to send that back. Now, I've already talked to Donna Kirkbride, who is in charge of Ohio Public Works, and she knows this is a fast-track project. So what she's going to do is she's going to expedite that as soon as she can, get it to us, and as soon as we get it, we're going to expedite it back to her. She can't take electronic copies, of course. It has to be original copies. So we'll expedite that back, and she's not going to let it sit on her desk. She knows we're going to get it, and she's going to send it right back to us, and then we'll be able to award the contract. So if something happens that we get it back on July 5th, or let's say July 7th, the day, two days after you have a council meeting, I might say, hey, Mayor, can we do a special meeting at noon someday or whenever just to award this? Sure, let's do it. So I may ask for that, but you know, if timing works out that it's, it may be a moot point. I'm not going to ask for a special meeting for two or three days. You know, if it works out close enough to the 18th, we'll do that. But by all means, if we're closer to the 5th.
Timing will be critical.
Yeah, we'll do it.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, and I've got no concerns with getting it done in the timeframe. You know, the project we did out there, they spent five hours the one day doing those spots, and they came back and repaved it a couple weeks later. So you know, I know the whole mile can be done easily, easily.
As long as the weather holds.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And if the weather doesn't hold, then the school's got the same problem with theirs, too. So, and the school did say if we don't get it done, there's other things they can do, they can work around it. So you know, it's not the end of the world if something happens, but you know, we can know, we'll do the best we can. But with that, I would request you suspend the rules and allow me to go ahead with this.
I move we suspend.
I'll second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Move that we adopt?
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Hope you get more good news.
No.
Okay, now we have a resolution in reverse asphalt, 2016 asphalt program, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number four, 2016, a resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as 2016 pavement marking program.
This here is our yearly striping program. I asked to bid this early in the year. We won't bid it until July or August, but it's usually around $75,000, give or take a little bit, so just a housekeeping item, I just request to get it done now, and that way we're good. So if you don't mind, I'd ask you to suspend the rules and go ahead and approve it.
I move we suspend.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, who is second?
Judy.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I move we approve.
Second.
Kerry?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay. It's made payment now. For the 2016 asphalt. Yeah, okay, all right. I don't have that one. We have, we have pavement marking and asphalt. I only have the...
We're at town.
Yeah, I know, but I only have the asphalt or pavement.
Looked like this.
I don't have it.
You want to?
It's all right. Number 10, now we have a resolution, so Lori, would you please number and read on the 2016 asphalt program? The one prior to was pavement, correct, or pavement marking?
Marking the striping, correct. Now we're doing the actual paving one.
Okay, so now we're doing the asphalt.
Resolution number five, 2016, a resolution authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to advertise for bids for the project known as 2016 asphalt program.
Again, housekeeping item, I usually ask to bid this in January or February. We don't have a actual list of the streets yet, we usually wait until we see if there's any emergencies that pop up with the winter. I'd like to keep permission to bid it now in case there is an emergency, if something bad happens. We can bid it in April and be ready to roll in May, but I think now we're down in the southeast part of town, we've been looking at some of the East Village over here, we might be looking at parts of Union Street, and then there's some areas of Marquee that have been, been there for probably 20 years, that are getting pretty close, that may warrant it. So fortunately, we haven't had a bad winter that's really cracked the streets out as bad as what we did last year, so I don't think we need to be necessarily reactive on the paving program, we might be able to be proactive and try and get caught up a little bit, but typically, we budget about $250,000 on that. We may do a little bit more, because I think Lori, we had some permissive tax set aside this year as well. Permissive tax is gas tax dollars that we get that can only be used for paving, so we may throw a little bit of that in there as well, depending on how the winter goes. But I'll come back before we bid it, just, or at least put a note or something in your council agenda, just let you know what we're planning on doing before it actually goes in paper. So with that, I'd request you suspend and approve.
I'll move we suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
I move we approve.
Second.
Kerry?
Yes.
Keith?
Yeah.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is employee status change, and Chief Willis?
Evening. On February 3rd, 2016, Alexandra Smith will successfully complete her one-year probation as police fire dispatcher. At this time, I would like to ask council to approve her step increase from pay range seven dispatcher trainee to pay range eight dispatcher, and again, this will take effect February 3rd.
What shift does she work?
She works second shift right now, 4:00, 4:00 p.m. to midnight.
How are you staff-wise on dispatchers and things like that? You in pretty good shape?
We are good. I'm going to eventually ask for a couple of part-time dispatchers to help fill in for vacations, stuff like that, but we're good right now.
Do you have part-time right now?
We have one.
Just one?
We have one.
Okay. Okay. Council, any other questions?
I move we accept this recommendation.
Second.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 12 on the agenda, we're going to have the annual reports from the parks, and also the engineering department. So Ben, I think you're up first.
Okay. In front of you, you've been presented with a 2015 annual report for the Bryan Parks and Recreation Department. Including, included in your report, you'll find a list of our boards and commissions, our employees, our activity numbers, pavilions, pools, all that kind of fun stuff, which we'll go through here in a minute. And then also in the back, you'll find an abbreviated tree report, the tree commission, and the tree report also fall underneath the Parks and Recreation Department. I would encourage you, as you have time to go through it, please do. If you have questions, concerns, anything that I can try to answer tonight, I'd be glad to do that, if something pops up after the fact, and you have a question, please don't hesitate to call me, I'd be glad to try to answer anything I can about the annual report in the Parks and Recreation Department. First thing first, and probably the most important part of my department, is my dedicated staff. Bruce Wheeler is my assistant director, Cindy Rao is our administrative assistant, Court Gosha handles the trees and the flowers, Duke Hutchins handles everything under the sun, Greg Hartman specializes in our irrigation and turf maintenance, Tony is our mechanic, and then Holly and Darby take care of our preschool, and then also summer programming in the parks for the kids, whether it be reading, arts and crafts, and that kind of stuff. One of the boards that falls underneath of me is my park board. This is an advisory board. We meet five to six times a year to go over whatever is going on in the parks. They also are kind of another set of eyes and ears in the public, in case something's going on that maybe we don't hear about. They call or bring it up at a meeting, and then we try to address and go forward. Occasionally, we'll have issues that the park board will bring to council. Sometimes they're few and far between, just kind of depends on what's going on, but they are very helpful to me and Bruce, as we plan to move forward with the parks and the property and stuff we have going on. As I mentioned before, also underneath of me is our tree commission. The tree commission also meets five to six times a year. They too are an advisory board. Court is actually a member of this board, so he is on the seat with the people and try to help guide them. They specifically look at the issues, problems we have with the trees. We've recently had five of them graduate from the Tree Academy, which is a new program being offered by the State Forestry Association here in Ohio. So they are becoming more active. Some of their issues that they take care of or work with would be Arbor Day, and education of the kids, of the importance of trees, and continuing to plant, so on and so forth. Now to our numbers, I will encourage you, the numbers are sometimes rough estimates. We do our best to try to get head counts and all that kind of good stuff from the people that use our facilities, and they're usually pretty good about that, but sometimes we have to do guestimates, depending on what the activity is, and for instance, like Barnfest, we have really no way to determine an exact number of people that are at Barnfest, so we kind of do a best guess. So last year, we estimated that we had about 162,000 people using our facilities. The list of the facilities are on the side, we have the community center, the East End Room, Lincoln School, the middle school, the shelters, we group into one, the pools, and then McDonald Rough Ice Arena. So that gives you a good idea of where our usage is. As you can see, it's pretty balanced from our facilities. Moving to the next screen is a five-year look at our usage through the facilities. As you can see, 2014 and 2015 were pretty much identical. They are very close in number. I think they're separated by about 5,000 people, which isn't very many when you're talking 162,000 people. So we think things are kind of leveling off a little bit. As you can see, 2011, 2012, and 2013, everything was kind of level, and then we took a big jump, so we think maybe things will level off again now where we're at, and moving forward. Our shelters and pavilions, we break apart. We estimated that we had 24,315 people, groups, use our shelters. As you can see, the largest usage is the JC Pavilion. We still have quite a few people that use pavilions one, two, and three throughout Rec Park. Moore, Moore Park is a huge pavilion. One of the biggest things with Moore Park is it's our, it's really our only enclosed pavilion, so it gets used earlier, and it gets used later, because we have a fireplace in there. So as soon as the water's turned on, people will start renting Moore Park, and even into November, as long as the water's on, we have quite a few rentals in there. So other than that, you can see they're, again, pretty well-balanced, which is kind of what we're looking for. We want to make sure that everything is being used across the board, not just one or two shelters. Again, our shelter usage for the year 2015, very comparable to 2014. Again, starting to maybe plateau a little bit, from 2011, 2012, 2013, we're very similar. We'll see what 2016 brings, but we may be reaching another plateau as far as that goes. The last one I have for you is our 2015 pool activities. Includes passes, public swim, lessons, rentals, swim team practices, meets, you name it, anything pool-related, we try to get a head count on. This past year, we estimate we serviced 21,236 people. Of that, 21% used East End Pool, 79% used Moore Pool, which is to be expected, because Moore hosts the swim team and all that kind of stuff. So they have a lot more people in and out for, compared to East End. This was the first year that we did not open both pools on the same day at the same time. So the number, as we get to the next screen, is down a little bit, but there's some other reasons for that. And the other thing too is with the pools, I will come back at a later date and present you all the pool numbers, so you can kind of see what the difference was from 2013 to 2014 to 2015 with not opening both pools at the same day at the same time. And then we can make an idea as to what we want to do going forward. But as you can see from the next screen, it is down a little bit. I will also caution you that I think in 2014, we hosted conference swim meet, so it's going to be down a little bit. The conference swim meet's a pretty huge deal, and there's quite a few people in and out that weekend. What I kind of look at is, is it's very comparable to 2013, very comparable to 2011 and 2012. So the number in 2014's probably inflated a little bit due to the conference swim meet, and this past year, I think changing the pool schedule and hours really had no effect on the number of people that we serviced throughout our pools, which we were very happy to see. So that's just a quick, it's just a quick glimpse at our year. It's obviously not everything, but it's just a quick snippet to give you some idea of what our year entails, and throw some quick numbers at you. As I said, every, everything else is in the book, from donations that we took in for trees, there's just a lot more information in the actual annual report itself that you have in front of you. So again, I would encourage, if you have questions after you look at it, don't hesitate to call me. Yeah, go ahead.
On the parks and rec, the usage of the park, what do you think was the jump in 2014 and 2015?
What is the jump?
Yeah, what would we use?
We think a lot of it is, is that in 2014, gas prices were through the roof, so we feel like there wasn't as much travel going on. People used our parks more. The other thing too is, we have to look at, when you look at a jump in there, you have to look at the baseball tournaments and softball tournaments that we're hosting throughout those years. The one year, we hosted the nine and under, or nine and 10 state Little League Championships that brought in 11 teams from out of town, probably close, somewhere between 8,000 to 10,000 people from out of town came in for that tournament. So just a little event like that creates the jump for us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Comment I want to make is, is that the other day, you drive through Bryan, and you see our parks, and we get complimented on our parks continuously. You know, they're probably as, probably as good as there is in Northwest Ohio, maybe even in the state, but the other day, I stopped out here at the East End Pool at preschool, and that's a riot. It's a riot, I mean, it was just, it was just a good feeling for me, to go in there and see those little kids and things like that, and they call them Miss Holly and Miss Darby.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and that, and so there, again, that's just a hidden factor, and I think I looked at the numbers here, and over 4,600 young adults go through that, you know, and I, I just think it's, if you're having a bad day, go out there, because, you know, you're going to walk out of there with a big smile on your face, it's unbelievable. So again, that's just another hidden treasure, that diamond in the rough, you know, that we, we provide for the city and our services and things like that, and I, and I think our rates, I mean, you just can't touch them. I mean, it's, you know, because we've talked that...
Yeah.
Basically, we don't, we don't make any money off of anything like that. I guess for that, hate to say it, but I could care less, you know, because of what we do for those kids, and what, you know...
Yep.
It's a great, it's a great program.
Yeah, they do a wonderful job out there, and we have, we have raised our rates to try to be a little bit more in line with what the other preschool, so to say, are offering. Where we kind of get into a pinch a little bit with the preschool is, a lot of the other preschools can be daycare facilities, so their numbers are, their registration, not registration, but their amount that you're paying to go there can be a little bit different, or they're funded through the school, and some of the kids that go there are receiving, the school's receiving money from the state because they're non-typical kids, which we, we don't have that advantage. So over the last, I don't know, three years, we have tried to adjust the rates to get them to the point where we may not be the highest, but we're at least a little bit more in the ballpark than what we were three years ago.
But I know that was a concern, we talked about that several times.
Yeah, absolutely.
That we wanted to get that up, and the least break even or whatever the case may be, but anyhow, so.
Thank you.
Having a bad day, get there as quick as you can.
I'd like to compliment the Parks Department on, I'm a walker, Jim's a walker. You go out there when there's snow, and those are some of the first sidewalks that are cleared. I can't walk from my house out to the park in the wintertime, because people don't clear their walks, but I can drive out to the park and know that those walks are clear. Good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think something else that should be noted here is the number of donations given in 2015. I'm not sure what the whole number of them, but it amounted to $13,056, which included trees, flowers, memorial bricks, and various things like that, so that's from the people of our community.
That's something new that you find in the annual report. Last year, I had a request from Park Board, some, one of my members of Park Board kind of got hit up and said, hey, did you see my memorial? And they knew nothing about it, so they asked if, that I would start putting those in there, so you guys can see who gives, what they give, what we use the money for. Also, you'll find in there, there are two donations in there from the Rosa Isaac Foundation, from the Bryan Area Foundation.
Big numbers.
Yeah, those are, those are used throughout the park, throughout the year, to, just to beautify things and keep things moving in the right direction.
The other ones in there is from BMU.
Oh, yeah.
$2,000, we want to thank for that, on trees, yeah.
Well, you can't put...
A beer would be good.
You can't put down in donations the times that they help.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
I mean, Adam and Al are a huge assistance to my guys, and, you know, it's, it's great to be able to have that working relationship with them, so when we need something, not that they drop what they're doing, but they're more than willing to help us out if they can help us out, and, and that's a huge benefit to us as a smaller department, to be able to lean on them and their expertise, and sometimes their equipment, to be able to help us get the things done that we need to get done, at a more reasonable cost than it would be to hire somebody to come in and do it.
I think it was pointed out at the Chamber banquet, too, the other night, that how Parks and City workers came together when we had all the rain over the day in the park, and they were able to put the, or get some electric and so forth moving out there and so forth.
These guys too, I mean, his guys were out there, as much as my guys trying to get things set up and help them out, so again, that's just another situation where we're able to, to lean on them a little bit, and they obviously come through for us. bit and they obviously come through for us big time. So again, if you have concerns, questions, don't hesitate to call me. Stop in and see me. Thanks. Appreciate it.
All righty. Mr. Bryan Whelan, Engineering, please.
This PowerPoint presentation does not follow along with my report, so if you're going to try and coordinate the two together, don't even waste your time on it. Basically, our annual report this year, very busy year last year. These two pictures, one of them is part of the paving program we had done and this one in the lower right corner is actually the sewer project that we had just bid here in December. Now that's actually out on Brenner Drive. You can see the snow on top there and that's, that's one of the neater pictures that I've taken, that we've taken this year. I just, you know, it goes to show that the crews seem to work in just about all types of weather. Oh, it went the wrong way. Okay, Engineering Team. Melanie Kaiser, she's the secretary, she keeps everything going. Andrew Waterston's my zoning administrator. He takes care of most of the design as well on the projects. Dawn Klein does our GIS mapping. She seems to be the person that most everybody on this end of town calls if they have trouble with their computers or email. If she can't figure it out, then we get a hold of BMU guys and they kind of help straighten things out. Patrick Thorpe, he's my surveyor and he also does all of my construction inspection. Scott Noble, he takes care of the traffic lights and also does construction inspection as well. And he also helps out with some of the, the stormwater infiltration and other inspections that we're actually been following up on and some new projects we're starting. And of course Frank Sinida, I think he's worked for the city for 47, 48 years and keeps coming back, so we, we appreciate his dedication. Well, just kind of highlight a couple of projects that we did last year. North Allen Street Improvements was bid actually December of 2014. The contractor was Advanced Rehabilitation Technology. Final cost was approximately $592,000. And if you recall, we did use some revolving loan funds towards that. Typically, it's basically a grant fund, but we wavered some interim revolving loan funds and used it towards that project. Two good pictures there. One of them tearing out a driveway and you can see the road's just a complete mess in the lower left end. It's, the curb's in, the sidewalk's in, and they're actually doing some paving on that. Really ended up being nice. Courtney did a real good job with tree placement on there and we'll be doing the one-year walkthrough here this spring to see if there's any warranty issues that need taking care of, but all in all, I'm very pleased with the project. Brunecardie Way Sewer and Water, that was bid February of last year. Bryan Excavating LLC was the low bidder. Final cost was under, around $348,000. And that basically went from Main Street West to the city limits, provided service to the new Bryan, Ohio Industrial Park, the north end of town there. That there is a picture of the boring crew. We actually had to bore under Brunecardie Way. There's a mobile home park and a couple of mobile homes down there that Ohio EPA laws say if you fall within 250 feet of the unit, they need to hook into city sewer if it's provided. So rather than cutting the road, we actually bored the tap under the road there and just kind of an interesting picture there. Oakwood Avenue Improvements, that was bid in June. Bryan Excavating LLC, seems like they were the low bidder on a lot of projects last year. Don't know how, I guess he just sharpens his pencil the best and does a good job at it. But final cost was $281,000. And again, that rebuilt Oakwood Avenue from South Lebanon to Pleasantwood and replaced utilities. Two pictures there, the upper right one, as you can see, the street's completely tore out. They're chiseling the subgrade and they're going to add water to it to compact it back down in to make sure that the subgrade will actually hold the stone base. And then the one in the lower left, the stone's in and the curb's in and they're actually paving. So it's just amazing how in a four, six or eight week time period, they can go from what you have in the right to what you have in the left. So I'm very happy with that project as well. I know it didn't affect that many residents in there, but it was a good tie-in for that part of town. And I know the street department had been fighting with that street for years with drainage issues. It was a chip seal street that had curbing in it and there were spots, the center of the road was probably a foot or a foot and a half above the curb. It was a mess. It would freeze in the winter and it would just be horrible. So we're, we're happy to have that one. It's one of our maintenance nightmares that's no longer an issue. The 2015 Asphalt Program, that was bid in August. Gurken Paving was the low bidder. It was a fairly small project last year. We'd stuck with the northern end of town. We'd done portions of North Walnut, Cherry, Lynn Street, a few spot repairs. We did one on North Main there by the post office. That seemed to be a spot where we'd had several water main breaks and other utility breaks there and it'd just been patched and patched and patched and we thought it was time to go ahead and take care of that. That picture right there is right in front of the library, so as you can see, the old to new, it really, really makes a difference there when you, you see nice new asphalt come down. The pavement marking program, you guys have authorized me to bid the 2016 program tonight. That was bid last August. Final cost was around $65,000 and Zimmerman Paint was the low bidder. They've been the low bidder on the project as long as I've been here and as long as I can remember before that. They do a good job for us. And that picture there is actually, I used the same picture last year. I thought we had two new council members. It's, it's more than just putting a little paint down on the road. There's, it's actually a three-step process. They throw some paint down and then the middle gun, it throws a, another agent down in there that kind of helps, number one, seal the paint and number two, have a bonding agent that glass beads in the last gun can go down and drop and stick to. So when you see reflectiveness on the, the paint, it's not the paint, it's the glass beads that are on top of there. So the glass beads need something to stick to. So most people don't know that it's a little three-step process there, but it's quite interesting. And if any of you are curious and you want to see a little more, if you want to ride with the paint guys, I, they'd love to have you in the truck for an hour or two with them. So Judy, if you're curious and you want to ride around with the painters or Carrie, let me know. I'll be in town proudly late summer and they'd love to have you and you can learn quite a little bit from them. Sewer improvements to La Glieta, Brenner, Palmer and High Street. That was one we had applied for some grant funds and did not receive. So we went ahead and proceeded with the La Glieta. If you remember, there were some people in there this summer that were, had issues with the sewer and we were already in the process of working on getting it replaced, but we went ahead and bid this this year. And actually, the projects are about done. You can see the snow there on the ground. They are actually working through the winter. The majority of the projects are complete. They have to do a little bit more storm work on La Glieta and they need to repair the electric conduits on High Street. If you've seen my traffic signal at High and Toy Street still has harps on the lights, that's because there was some conduits and junction boxes that were in the way. The electric department was gracious enough to take their lights down, their actual street lights. There were some of those in the bases that had to come out. They'll have to pour some new bases in for the electric department and replace a lot of the conduit in there, as well as replace our conduit for our traffic signal. So we're hoping this week, early next week, they can get that project wrapped up so we can, you know, get our lights back in service and as well as the utility can get their street lights back in service. The original completion date on that project was July of 2016. Obviously, that'll just be proceeding. I'm sure they'll come in late April, early May, as soon as it's fit, when the ODOT manual says they're allowed to seed and all the settling should be done and we'll get that project seeded and wrapped up and should be able to, residents should have their yards back by the time schools let out. Retro reflectivity mandates, we do that every year. We try and spend at least $10,000 a year. Tyson and I went to a class a few years ago on retro reflectivity and what it means and basically, it's just how good a sign reflects. And, you know, there's a few signs in town that I've noticed, not necessarily stop signs. We went through in 13 and 14 and took care of all the stop signs. 15, we were taking care of some of the no parking here to corner, the no turn on reds and some of the other non-critical signs. And now we're proceeding this year, we're going to keep going on with some other signs. And they have about a 10-year life expectancy on them with the 3M reflectivity that's on there. So just a couple of little cute signs there. That one in the lower left, it's just stop. Can't go left, right, forwards, backwards, just stop. Obviously, that wasn't taken in Bryan, but just like to chuckle a little bit when I see that. Wastewater Digestor Cleaning Project, we did not fund that, but we did assist the wastewater plant with preparing the bid documents, handled the bid process and helped work out with pay estimates and whatnot. That was actually bid September 2014. That got wintered out and they could not get it done last fall, so they finished that this summer, just under $110,000. And that's a picture of the little pump that they actually had to fill the tankers and the tanker, slurry tankers actually then went to the farms and transferred it into another apparatus that actually applied it to the farm. And I've actually talked to Rick Holmeyer about it today. They'd used a few of, I believe it was Allen Dean's farms to put this on and Allen is, is a real good steward and uses cover crops a lot over the winter. And Rick said he could see a huge difference in the cover crop where they actually applied this to where they didn't. So there's a huge fertilizer benefit to this. He said it was just a huge difference between where this had been applied and had not. So it's good to put it back on, good fertilizer benefits. Other tasks, we're responsible for traffic control devices. We assist Bryan Municipal Utilities if necessary for bidding of projects. Just one example, most of their waterline projects that they, they draw up, they work with me and I actually put my engineering stamp on it, submitted to Ohio EPA for them. So they don't need to waste any money on a consultant. I'm here if, if they need me. I also assist the wastewater and Parks Department with capital projects. Assist the street department is needing, needed. Our zoning and building departments are in-house and we also have two pickups that plow snow in some parking lots and if Tyson gets behind on the streets, we, we help out there as well as needed. 2016 goals, as always, I try to apply for some more funds to further stretch the 1/2% income tax. We're going to again, try to apply for North and South Main Street paving project. Now, we'll apply this year. If we're successful, that will not be construction until 2019. They're that many years behind on when you apply and through the process. So we're actually, we're dusting off our application on that and going to update it and see if we can get a higher ranking on that as well. I think last year, they said there was like $36 million worth of projects that were, were asked for and I think there was less than $8 million that was available to spend. So they're pretty competitive. We've only got about 25% chance, but hoping next year, our number's up and we'll be able to get in on that. And always every year, we apply for Ohio Public Works for water and sewer improvements and I guess I should modify that for street improvements because we were very fortunate this year to get a street improvement project on that. And also, we're going to continue with the commercial and industrial clean water investigations. What we do on that, we pick a couple of larger factories. We had picked one earlier this spring and went through, pulled out all the building plans we had on it, look inside, try and see where we might potentially have a chance for a cross connection. And a cross connection would be a downspout or a roof drain that goes into the sanitary sewer. And that's, that's against EPA regulations. Well, rather than stumble around a factory all day long, we plan it out, try and get our plan of attack, kind of like the fire chief does with his pre-planning on a, on a structure fire. They know before they go in where everything is. So Scott and I sat down and we looked at about 10 key areas and there was one particular industry in town that we picked on this year and we actually found a couple of roof drains that put a fair amount of water into the sanitary sewer. So we worked with them on trying to reroute those and come up with a good plan to get that out of the sanitary sewer. So, and it's, it's pretty involved process by the time we, we dig around and find plans and go through and try and figure out what we can do to help them. So we're going to pick a couple other bigger industries in town that are in the older part of town. You know, we're not as concerned with ones in the industrial park. You know, they're new enough, they've all got stormwater retentions, they're all separated. But we'll pick on a few others this year and dig in a little deeper and work with the plant managers and maintenance staff and try and see what we can come up with on helping them out if they do have a problem and try and get it corrected to keep some stormwater out of our sanitary. So it's a pretty time-consuming project, but we're there. And you talk about the day in the park last year, that sign, was that taken Ben last year, the day before?
No.
With the high water that we had in there? I think we just talked about that, how much rain we had for the day in the park. So any questions?
Is Engineering Department responsible for the blight areas of the community?
Depends on what blight you're talking about. I'm responsible to look at a structure that needs condemned.
Yes.
A structure that needs condemned is, I need to be fearful for my life that it's going to fall on top of me when I walk inside there. If it's not a condemnable structure, what it comes down to is it goes to the unsightly structures, which I believe is in Section 5 of the code, we passed that a few years ago, that the police actually get involved with that and try and work with them on unsightly structures. So if you've got a building that's ready to fall down, I can write a condemnation notice. Or if you've got brick falling out of a structure or something that's a public safety hazard, I can step in. But if it's more of an unsightly or just a really rundown residence that's not condemnable, we work with the police department on that. And I believe Sergeant Wiegles, who we usually work with on that, and he does a pretty good job of going in there and seeing what he can do to help us out.
I get more complaints on blight area problems than anything else.
I understand. There's several around town.
Yeah, I know.
So as we get those, we look at and see if there's anything we can do and if not, we work with the police department and try and see if there's anything they can do as well as far as a citation or get them to clean it up.
Thank you.
The only thing I want to do is make a comment is that I think we're very fortunate in regards to grants.
Right.
Because you write up, you apply, you write up all of our grants.
We get a fair amount of them.
Chief Siders works, drafts up his own grants. And I know what you just mentioned is that working hand in hand with, you know, Bryan Municipal, you know, with their engineers over there and working together on grants. So there again is another great benefit that we have in the city that would cost us a lot of money if we had to go out and have it.
Yeah, if you remember the Toy Street Waterline Project, it used to be we would get a lot more points applying for a waterline grant because waterline is more public safety, more health and safety than sewer is in this particular Ohio Public Works grant process. So what I do is I'll sit down every year with Norm and people from the water department and say, what do we need? And in fact, if you stop in my office sometime, and you've been up there, I've got my dry erase board there around my wall and Carrie, you've seen it, we've shared it with you. I got my next 10 years' worth of street projects that we could potentially do. And if there's a big blue W behind it, that means they could use a water main. And what we do is we'll sit down and say, okay, Norm, how much money do you got next year? Do you think we can do something like this? And we'll try and apply for a waterline project. And what I'll do is I'll piggyback my street on top of their waterline project. You know, if I can get half of their waterline paid for and they can help me get half my street paid for, you know, it works great. So Toy Street's a, you know, prime example of, you know, the utility and the city itself working together to apply for a grant together and sharing the wealth and making it work.
How much was that?
Oh, I think that was, I usually apply for the peak, I usually apply for $275,000. If you get $275,000 in grant funds, that's the maximum before you start losing points. If you apply for more, I think you lose like 10 points on that. So we typically shoot for a $5,000 to $550,000 project with up to half of that as matching funds. I don't believe Toy Street was that expensive. I thought it was only like $400,000 total if I'm going from memory. So it was only a couple hundred thousand apiece. But I usually apply for more. That way, if we stumble across something else, the, it's padded a little bit more. But yeah, I do thank Bryan and his crew over there. You know, even on this, this High Street project, everything they've done for, you know, helping us out with the streetlights and, you know, Frank, he's been kind of out of commission off and on here. So their guys come up with their bucket once in a while. I need help in an emergency and they really do a good job. So I echo your comments there on both departments working together. We're happy to have them and I hope they're happy to have me. So any further questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right, well, I ran late, so.
So I'll pass this down. This is our 1/2% on roads from 1994 to 2015, taking out the 1/2% in a different quadrant. So you might want that for your record to show. Melanie did that, his report.
Twenty-four million now?
Yes.
I looked at it for a while.
See what the total is and comment very bad.
Grant total, 29 million, all nine ones.
Okay, that's all we have on the agenda, so I'm going to go around the room. So Ben, do you have anything else to add? Okay, Brian? Okay. Chief Wallace? All right, Chief Siders? All righty. Leroy, you okay?
I'm okay.
Good, all right, boy. We need you.
It's warm in Opelika, Leroy. Are you going to work this year or not?
Okay. Judy, do you have anything?
No.